18th, 2023. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sure many of you know we lost a member of our police department yesterday in a traffic accident. Officer Daddato passed away investigating another traffic accident. I'd like everyone to just take a moment of silence. Thank you, and we wish his family the very best. The upcoming meeting dates for the planning board are January 16th, 2024, and February 20th, 2024. We have minutes for the November 21st, 2023 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll also do a roll call this evening, starting with John. John Giovinoli.
Don Pepe.
Lori G.
John Eichman.
Richard Campbell.
Ed Miocci.
Sarah Bledsoe.
And thank you for that. First item on the agenda is Farm View Estates at Phillips Farm. This is a request for two, three-month extensions for subdivision plan that was approved on June 20th, 2023. So this, if granted, will expire on June 20th, 2024.
Here tonight for an extension. On this one, we just received the verbal approval from the Health Department on the septic and the water design. So we feel that approval is just around the corner. Just tightening up loose ends with DOT and town engineer and easements and some legal ends. But we're moving forward slowly.
Got it. Any questions or comments from board members or professionals on this? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve the extension.
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is Frias Bridges Subdivision.
Yep, same, we're in the same boat with this one, too. We have final submission into the Health Department for well and septic design for the proposed lots. And then we just received some of the easement descriptions for the lands to be protected on the back of lot number one. So those will be forthcoming to the town engineer for review. So this one's moving along as well.
So this extension will expire on April 18th, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve this extension?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next item on the agenda is an adjourned public hearing for Formicola Subdivision. It had been my understanding that we would further adjourn this
Yes, sir.
to the next meeting. So may I have a motion to further adjourn Formicola Subdivision to our January meeting?
So moved.
Anybody here?
Good question. Lori's asking, is there anyone here who may have wanted to speak for or against the project? If not, back to a motion to adjourn the public hearing. I think we had that from Ed.
So moved.
And, what, second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next item on the agenda, thank you very much, is Gasland East Fishkill Wine and Spirits. We started a public hearing on this, I believe, at the last meeting. May I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Welcome.
Good evening. While I open the sub, I'll give you a brief update on the project. Since the last time we were before this board, the applicant made a submission to the ARC and attended that. And I believe that received some comments on the building elevations, and they'll be revising those as submitting it. I understand that they can't, we can't close this public hearing until that section has been resolved. So we're just here tonight, you know, continuing with the project. Since the last meeting, we made some minor changes to the plan that I would want to just bring up that were discussed at the last meeting. So we, since the last meeting, it was brought up by Duchess Planning, as well as one of the town's consulting engineers, that the first space in, in front of the liquor store was a little too close to the entrance. So we shifted it five feet to the south to provide a little more buffer room. As you can see now, a vehicle can be queuing within the entrance, not blocking the sidewalk, not blocking any of the traffic in Route 376, in case somebody is, let's say, backing out or they're waiting their turn to kind of enter the site. Zoom in here. It's at this location here. That also required shifting everything a little bit further to the south. So this landscape buffer has been slightly revised to address that. We also made some changes to the lighting plan. We reduced the lighting levels at the property line in general around the, around this proposed building to reduce the light trespass across the property line. Those are the major changes since the last submission. As I mentioned, we're waiting for the Architect Review Committee to resolve itself before we finalize this. There are some comments remaining about the water connection that we are, we are working to address and will be providing some answers on that with the next submission. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments by board members?
I know that there was some subject matter brought up about the sidewalk connectivity from, you know, each end of the property line continuing through to the next.
Yes, I failed to mention, we did do, we did extend that. The, there was about a portion, there is sidewalk along the front up to the easternmost entrance. And we extended it from that entrance to the east up to the edge of the property line, basically. So that it's, we're continuing as far as we are able to continue.
Okay. And then I know we did talk about the water, and you did bring that up. But is this project going to add sprinkler into the units you're building onto with regards to the apartments and stuff?
I believe for the liquor store building, that is the case. But for the convenience, uh, convenience mart building, for the gas station, I don't believe that is the case. That already has all the approvals.
So I guess the water concerns would be, are you going to be bringing in a separate water service for the fire line to be apart from the domestic water service?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions or comments from our professionals?
I just saw that you, go ahead.
No, go ahead, ladies first.
I saw that you had added a little, or there's a little bit of landscaping added between the existing garage building and the new building that you converted garage building.
Yeah, we, we had that in the previous submission, but by shifting the parking spaces further to the south, it got changed a little bit, but it's still effectually the same.
Okay. And you're also adding a little bit of landscaping up front as well?
Yes, that was added in a previous submission at the request of a board member, which
Just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Okay, Dave?
The apartments over the convenience store, are they currently apartments that are being lived in? Or is that just space?
I think it's just open space. They've gotten a building permit to, to construct the apartments in there, though.
Okay. We're going to recommend, I'll tell you now, so won't be surprised here, that that be alarmed. I mean, obviously, we like to have residential sprinklers in there, but at least an alarm system. We'll be recommending the sprinklers, but whether it's required or not, I don't know. But the fire alarm system, definitely.
Okay, any?
Remaining comments are mostly administrative. They need to get their Health Department approval, obviously. Regarding the water main along the front, just like they did with the sidewalk extending it to the property line along the front, if you could just extend that main maybe another 20 feet to the northwest, so it kind of lines up with the projection of the common lines, so in case the town wants to continue it, they can just leave off. I think it's only additional 20, 25 feet, maybe.
You're talking to the, all the way to west, basically.
To the northwest corner, yes.
Okay, anything else?
On Hudson Valley Engineering, I commented about that one parking space that you just previously referenced being eliminated. You said you shifted it five feet, so I'll have them take a look. And that they had asked for a three-year accident history at the entrance. Do you know if that had been provided?
We had submitted that in the last mission, yes.
We did, okay.
Okay, are there any members of the public who are here to speak about the project? If not, I think that will conclude things. If you don't have any further comments, I'll accept a motion to adjourn the public hearing to our January meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Poffick Paws. And may I have a motion to open the public hearing for Poffick Paws?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, please proceed.
How are you? So since the last time we met, nothing's really changed much. We do have someone actively ready, if we do get the approval and everything, to put up some landscaping around our yard to make sure it looks aesthetically pleasing from all ends. And then we just, as precaution, we did start looking into like different type of fencing or things we could do if, you know, sound does ever become an issue. So we do have a second backup plan on things we can change, so we make sure we're accommodating our neighbors and everyone around us.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members? Any questions or comments from our professionals?
Okay, did you provide, at the, I know you're planning on to adding landscaping. Did you provide any sort of concept plan or anything for that landscaping?
No.
Okay, so maybe what we could do is if the board so desires to consider an approval tonight, we could condition for some sort of conceptual landscape plan, just that I can take a look at what, what you're proposing at some point, and I can work with you in the field to make sure that it accomplishes our goals, okay?
Excellent.
Yeah, I haven't picked anything out set in stone, because I figured I would consult with the town and kind of figure out what would be best. So I brought in someone who does work with it, so they can find plants that thrive outside in all different types of weather and around dog environments and soil that's covered by dogs. So that's as far as I've gotten, but as far as what it will actually be, I figured we could all figure that out together.
Very good.
And then I don't know if the fire advisory board had any specific comments on that. I, I think maybe you provided comments on this earlier than the last version that we saw, so I didn't see their specific comments on it. But do we need to add anything into the resolution for you guys, other than maybe a Knox box or all that?
Well, yeah, of course, the Knox box, that's going to be part of our process going forward. And again, my only concern was that would, somebody would be sleeping there overnight or that there'd be dogs open in the space overnight, should we have to go in.
Right, there would always be someone there, so you have access. And I think the only question I would have is I have to have my fire exits checked. I think because the building was out of use for a little while, I'm not sure if they're in the correct spot from the last time I had the inspector come in, so I just want to make sure.
Needs egress out of the building, so.
Perfect.
And then, John, I, I changed the third warehouse clause, so when you get to that, when you're reading the resolution, I'm going to read that.
Perfect, great, thank you. Are there any members of, I, by the way, I have several letters I'm going to summarize for everyone in a few minutes. But first, I'll ask if there's any members of the public who are here to speak for or against the project. There being none, I will summarize the letters. So we have actually 15 letters that are all in favor of the project. And I'll just let you know who they are and maybe give you just a brief indication of what they've indicated. So Marisol Bygert indicates that she's writing in support of Poffick Paws. She and her husband take their two dogs to daycare. They socialize enrichment activities, love our dogs, receive the Poffick pets, give us peace of mind during the day when we're not with our babies. Andrew Doherty indicates he's writing to show his support for Poffick Paws. They've been customers for over a year. Cheryl Brady indicates that she's a dog mom and has been a daycare attendee with Poffick Paws Pet Care for the past three years. Bottom line, she's been a loyal customer of Poffick Paws since her first started attending. And aside from my own mother, according to Cheryl, they are the only people who I trust to care for my dog in my absence, which is great. The next person is Pamela Spector, who says that she is writing in support of Poffick Paws. She indicates Jessica has a strong work and moral ethic. Her empathy, compassion, integrity are admirable. I would love to continue to support her business, she continues to support our great town. Jessica Santoro and John Fernandez indicate Poffick Pups daycare has been an asset to the community since relocating to their Route 376 location. They work closely with dog trainer, mischief managed dog trainer, to ensure staff are well-versed in dog handling practices. They also have frequent training sessions for their staff. Kim Gonzalez supports Poffick Paws business in every way. They're a huge help to those of us with dogs that need some extra playtime. Casey Monstronardi indicates she highly recommends allowing Poffick Paws to operate their business here and make the requests for changes. Excuse me for banging my, my mic. Drew Brophy, Poffick Pups was a great addition to Hopewell. I love their constant involvement in the community, and they desire to help. Matthew and Amanda Bersik say that it's invaluable to them as a couple, and they are blessed to be able to support this locally-owned East Fishkill business. Melissa Discantanis, Nick Donaldson, Mary Discantanis, George Discantanis. We're proud supporters of Poffick Pups Pet Care Service. They bring a viable business to the town that is needed and has great success. Kate Menzanz is writing in regard to Poffick Pups and is in full support. I'm going to actually make this just a little bit quicker and let everybody know the names, because they all basically are saying very, very high praise. Melissa Chilio, Lisa Hauer, Edida Dubrowski, and Andrea and Bill Margiato. There is one letter that we've received that is actually opposed. This actually is an email that we received from Anne Marie Gentile. Anne says, "My name is Anne Marie Gentile. I live at 874 Route 376, from Jessica DeRose's Doggy Daycare Kennel at 867 Route 376. We hear dogs barking constantly 24 hours a day, seven days a week. In the summer, it's worse when we are outside, but hear it when we are indoors as well. My son's window faces their property and can't sleep with his windows open because the dogs bark at night as well as daytime. It seems as though the dogs are outside at night past midnight. Please let me know if there is another meeting I can attend, as I was away for the first one. Thank you, Anne Marie Gentile." And that, those are all the letters. I don't know if you're familiar with Anne Marie Gentile or her particular complaint, but is there something you can respond to?
When we first went there, I think, like, we've spoken, but I don't know her too much. I actually did give her, I gave all my neighbors the contact to say, like, hey, if you ever hear us, like, call me, let me know. I'll get them inside immediately. The only thing I can guess is, because the dogs are definitely not outside past midnight, and I'm happy to put cameras up and everything to do whatever to prove that. Think the biggest problem that we're going to run into is the people behind me. They have their own, it's a residence, and they have their own personal dogs. But they have like very houndy dogs, and like, if my dumpster closes, they'll bark. They're very noisy. So I don't know if that's making it seem like it's us, but that would probably be my best guess. Because we are definitely not out past midnight.
Got it. Any, any further comments or questions from any board members or professionals? If not, I will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have a negative declaration and resolution. Negative declaration, name of action, Poffick Paws. Unlisted action. The proposed project would not be expected to result in any significant adverse impacts on the environment for the following reasons. It will not generate a significant amount of additional vehicles, noise, or emission levels. Will not affect rare or endangered species of animals or plants or habitat of such species. Will not result in any impacts to historic or archaeological resources. Will not result in any impacts related to hazardous materials. Will not result in significant effects on air, water quality, or ambient noise levels for adjoining areas. Will not be subjected to unacceptable risk of flooding or major geological hazards. Will not have a substantial aesthetic effect. Will not involve adversely affect any surf, any surface water or groundwater. Will not allow for improper uses within specific zoning districts. Will not result in adverse cumulative impacts. Will not result in adverse growth-inducing impacts. And will not conflict with the town's comprehensive plan. May I have a motion to approve that negative declaration?
So moved.
So moved, second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Weren't you going to read in?
I just, well, I want to just talk a little bit about the process here, because the applicant has been in front of the zoning board. The zoning board cannot grant their approval until the neg deck was finalized, which is done tonight. So they're still going through that zoning board process. They are in front of the zoning board, and correct me if I'm wrong, for the 150-foot required setback, which they cannot meet. And, and so at this point, now you've given your neg deck, the zoning board is free to make their decision. So we will need to condition for approval from the zoning board, which I've added to my resolution here.
But they're in operation now, though.
Correct, because this one is sort of came to us through the building department as a violation, because they were operating the business without site plan approval and without zoning board approval. So it, the process was a little bit different than it right backwards, exactly. Can you just describe your fence to me right now? Are, is it, is it white, or is it chain link with the slats?
So it's chain link, and then there, we have a mesh covering that goes around, so the dogs can't see out, you can't see in. It's all just black.
Doesn't do much for sound.
No, so I did start to look into this company called Acoust blocks, and they make attachments that can go on to fence panels. I'm part of like an international dog daycare page, and we kind of will feed off each other, so I was seeing what other people did. And they found to use those, and it seems to work very well. So if that's something you want us to look at, we're happy to.
Make that a condition.
Okay, we'll make that a condition. What is, are they, is it cloth? Is it like a padded thing that goes over the fence?
I believe it's like a, it's like a, I would almost say it's like a fiber kind of plastic material. I can send over an email with a couple of different options, and then we can, you know, further discuss kind of what we all think might be best. We can do trial and error period, whatever's better.
All right, so we'll add, I'll add a condition that the applicant proposed, the applicant provide noise. What do they call it, noise attenuation?
Like sound deadening panel?
Yeah, sound dimming, noise reduction.
Attenuation, maybe attenuation.
Yeah, and we'll make that subject to your approval as well, when you're taking a look at the landscaping plan?
Landscaping. shall provide noise attenuation along the fenced dog pen.
Okay. Did our file document the, I can't remember, you told us last time, the latest the dogs might be out?
So usually, it's, I would say, so we close at 7:00. So if no one's staying over, then 6:30. If there are dogs staying over, 8:00 to 8:30. If anyone else has to go out later than that, like, they're really young, they have to go out potty more frequently, they have to go out on a leash, and it's only one by one.
So would you like to put a condition in?
Maybe even 9 o'clock.
Okay.
Cut a few.
So no, no use of the dog pen. If you're taking them out on a leash, that's different, but no use of the dog pen past 9:00 P.M.
That sounds fair.
Perfect.
Okay, any other comments, any other additions to, that people would like to consider? If not, I'll read the resolution. This resolution is for amended site plan approval and change of use for 876, 867 Route 376 Associates LLC, whereas the applicant is applying for a change of use from professional office space to dog daycare and a site plan amendment for the installation of an outdoor dog pen. And whereas no change in the building footprint is proposed, and whereas the proposed project
This is where I'm going to add. Whereas the planning board declared lead agency on November 21st, 2023, and a neg deck was adopted on 12/19/23. End, go ahead.
Got it. And whereas the proposed project is a type 2
That's getting scratched.
You've scratched that. Very good. So now, therefore, be it resolved
Yep.
that the planning board hereby approves the change of use and minor amendments to the site plan is represented on a survey entitled 867 Route 376, prepared by Robert L. Campbell dated 2/1/23 and subject to the following conditions. Number one, the preparation of a conceptual landscape plan showing landscaping that buffer views of the outdoor pens subject to the approval of the town planner. Number two, approval from the Duchess County Health Department. Number three?
Conditioned on approvals from the zoning board of appeals. And there's, those were variance approvals for the 150-foot buffer. And then the other is that the applicant shall provide noise attenuation along the fenced-in dog pen, subject to approval of the town planner. And then the final condition is no use of the dog pen beyond 9:00 P.M.
Very good.
I'm sorry, did you say the review of the landscape plan as well?
Yes, that was the first, that was the first condition.
Is there an AM limit besides the PM?
Oh, yeah, we should put an AM, that's a good idea.
What's the earliest?
7:00?
About before 7:00?
No use of the dog pen, before 7:00 A.M. And after 9:00 P.M.
Like Saturday and Sunday?
Weekends were only 8:30 to 6:30.
All right, I'm going to put weekend hours in there, too, 8:30 to 6:30. Okay.
Okay. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. This resolution was offered by planning board member John Eichman. May I have a second?
Second.
We will do a vote by roll call. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Miocci.
Aye.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Don Pepe.
Aye.
Don, excuse me, John Giovinoli.
Aye.
And John Eichman, I'm an aye. It carries.
Thank you guys so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is 10 Corporate Park.
Okay, Bill Powell, here on behalf of the applicant, East Fishkill Corporate Park. We're here tonight looking for a change in use in an existing building at 10 Corporate Park Drive. The property is located
I will in a moment. Excuse me for interrupting you. I should have actually started this with, could I have a motion to open the public hearing for this applicant?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, please, please continue.
Yeah, we're here tonight looking for a change in use in the, at 10 Corporate Park to allow a church to occupy 7,928 square feet inside 10 Corporate Park, which is in the B1 zone. By allowing them to lease this space, there's going to be no work or changes to the exterior of the site. The existing parking lot and building site will be used as is. That's it.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members?
Anything changed since the last time?
Nope.
Questions or comments from our professionals?
Yeah, I just want to confirm, did you say 7,923?
28.
28, okay. So the, our fire inspector took a look at the site, because we wanted to find out what the capacity was. These would be also the parking. So the fire inspector has capped the capacity of the church at 150 people based on the ingress and egress. And Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong about that, but I think it was based on 150, based on the ingress and egress. So if anything, if you want to go higher than that, you would then maybe need to make some modifications or change things around.
No, that falls within the limit that, that we're planning on this, so that's fine.
Okay, so that's going to be in the resolution, that number?
That's fine.
Okay. Okay. And then the applicant is also requesting a shared parking special permit, which you guys have the ability to determine whether or not you'll allow him to share his parking. He's proposing that because the use is off use from all the other existing uses, that they would be using the parking that all the other site uses, use during the week, but they would be using it on the weekend and therefore there wouldn't be a conflict. Okay?
So what I thought there was like some kind of issue with regards to when the soccer field is fully operational and then there was carryover because they were allowing the field to use the parking that was like kind of layover from what would be used here.
I would, I don't, there's no conflict because we don't have any formal agreement with the soccer club to allow any parking. We've just been a friendly neighbor allowing that to happen. Most of the parking that does occur actually occurs on, in the parking lot at Wickapee Plaza.
Yeah.
Because that parking lot's actually closer to the road and closer to the entrance. So we find that anybody that does park over there, they tend to use that. But we have been working with the East Fishkill Soccer Club when they have their Memorial Day tournament and will continue to do that. And, you know, we wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to use this front parking lot, you know, on Sunday when the church would be there, but we have other alternatives such as Wickapee Plaza to work with the, with the community on that.
Aside from the parking, what about the conflicts in traffic with the soccer on Sundays? You know, I believe travel soccer usually starts around noon, so I'm hopeful that maybe you're done before then to try to prevent any backups in that area.
We have a double lane leaving East Fishkill Corporate Park, so we don't anticipate any, any major track, traffic issues with that.
Does the soccer club have any sort of agreement with the church to park there? The church has just allowed it as sort of a benefit to the community?
No, there would be no agreement with the soccer club.
So they don't have any actual legal right to park there?
No. We just, I'm an owner of the building and we've just been a friendly neighbor allowing the parking and we don't have any reason not to. I've been working with Phil at the East Fishkill Soccer Club and we've even worked through having signs and they've put volunteers over there during the tournaments to make sure our tenants have parking places because one year they, the soccer club took up all the parking. So it was something that we simply resolved amongst ourselves and they, the soccer club did a real great job in policing that on their own.
Nice. Any other questions or comments from our professionals? If not, I'll open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public here to speak for or against the project? There being none, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we do have a resolution for a change of use. Name of applicant, East Fishkill Corporate Park LLC/Greysland Church. Resolution offered by planning board member John Eichman. Whereas the applicant is applying for a change of use from a warehouse light manufacturing use to a church. Whereas the fire inspector has capped the capacity of the church at 150 people per the fit-up plan dated October 30th, 23. Whereas the applicant is requesting a shared parking special permit. Whereas the applicant has demonstrated that the proposed church would operate on the weekends when the other uses on the site are not in operation. Whereas the site contains 105 parking spaces. Whereas no change in the building footprint is proposed. Whereas the proposed project is a type two action under SEAKER and no further environmental reviews required. Now therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the change of use is represented on a map entitled East Fishkill Corporate LLC, prepared by Povell Engineering, dated 6/28...
Oh, it is. It's an old site plan, so there's nothing changing on the site.
Dated June 28th, 2001.
Yes. And just, just, I just want to make one correction. The site contains 107 parking spaces.
Okay.
Okay. Matt actually went out there and counted them for me.
And last revised with the following conditions. Number one, provide a monitored fire alarm and notification system. Number two, install a Knox box in the main entry to the church with keys that will provide access to the outside, including landlord utility room and any locked interior doors. Number three, approval from the Duchess County Health Department. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. May I have a second for this resolution?
Second.
Or second.
Thank you, Lori. And so we'll do a roll call of vote. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Donald Pepe.
Aye.
John Geovagnoli.
Aye.
And John Eichman, I'm an aye.
Thank you.
Pass. Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Happy holidays.
You too.
Happy holidays to you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Forever Friends. And may I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Please proceed.
Hello. Good evening. Nothing's really changed from last time. Should I go over it all again?
If, if nothing's changed, why, why don't we leave it to the board members and our professionals to ask some questions?
Okay.
If that's okay. So do we have any questions or comments from board members? If not, how about questions or comments from professionals?
I just have a couple of questions. First, I just want to reiterate, this is the same, very similar to the previous one. They're currently going through the ZBA process as well for the 150-foot setback and also in their case, they're adding an outdoor pen within the existing parking lot. That the existing parking lot extends slightly beyond the front of the, the building. So the pen will be slightly within the front yard. So they also need a variance because they're going to have the pen slightly in the front yard. However, a mitigating factor of that is that there's a line of ever tall, very tall evergreen trees that's going to be like right in front of where the fenced-in area is. So you would not be able to see that from the road and you won't even be able to see that the pen is kind of slightly in front of the, the building front line. They're on a corner lot also, which makes it a little difficult for them.
And then, Michelle, I'm sorry, you said it's being built on pavement?
Yeah. So they have, it's the old children's medical group building.
Okay.
And there's a very large parking area and there's really no space except for the front along 82 where you could put a outdoor pen. So, and it's a requirement per the kennel permit. So they have to put some sort of outdoor space if they're going to have dogs overnight, which they are, they're going to have puppies overnight and I think you're also getting your rescue license, correct? Yeah. So there's going to be at times dogs boarded there. So because there's that boarding activity happening, they have to have an outdoor fenced-in area.
So would you eventually intend to turn that to grass or you would leave it paved?
Uh, pavement's probably easier to take care of and clean for the dogs because they're just going out there under supervision, controlled groups by the trainers. It's not going to be, grass, they would just rip up or it's all, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see, is there anything else?
Any other questions or comments from our professionals or from our fire advisory board?
Just underscoring that same concern, making sure there's not somebody actually sleeping when they're there overnight and the dogs are in enclosures. So if fire members said do have to go, then they're not.
And the Knox box.
Right.
Okay.
And then John, just so you know, when we get to the resolution, this again is going to be a negative deck, not a type two, because they have that coordinated review with the ZBA.
Got it.
Okay. So we will, we, I'll give you the dates for that.
Great. Is it your intention to occupy the entire building for this one use?
Uh, yeah. We do a couple of things. We do grooming, we do training, we have holistic pet supplies, we do events, we do pretty much everything but vet stuff. Our pet sitting we do in our homes, so it's more of a home vibe. So we watch your dog, they come to our homes, not like a real kennel. So it's like a all-in-one pet stop shop.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who are here to speak for or against the project? There being none, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Negative declaration. Name of action, Forever Friends. The proposed project would not be expected to result in any significant adverse impacts on the environment for the following reasons. It will not generate a significant amount of additional vehicles, noise, or emission levels. Will not significantly affect rare or endangered species of animals or plants or habitat of such species. Will not result in any impacts to historic and archaeological resources. Will not result in impacts related to hazardous materials. Will not result in a significant effect on air, water quality, or ambient noise levels for adjoining areas. Will not be subjected to unacceptable risk of flooding or major geological hazards. Will not have a substantial aesthetic effect and will not adversely affect any surface water or groundwater. Will not allow for improper uses within specified zoning districts. Will not result in adverse cumulative impacts and will not result in adverse growth inducing impacts and will not conflict with the town's comprehensive plan. May I have a motion to approve this negative declaration?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We now have a resolution. Name of site plan, the lands of Forever Friends family. Name of applicant, Forever Friends. Resolution offered by planning board member John Eichman. Whereas the applicant is applying for a change of use from professional office space to a kennel with doggy daycare and a site plan amendment for the installation of an outdoor dog pen. And whereas no change in the building footprint is proposed, and whereas?
The planning board declared lead agency on November 21st, 2023, and adopted a negative declaration on December 19th, 2023.
Thank you. Now therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the change of use and minor amendments to the site plan is represented on a map entitled The Lands of Forever Friends Family, prepared by Robert Oswald, dated November 8th, 2023, with the following conditions. Number one, the preparation of a conceptual landscape plan showing landscaping that buffer the views of the outdoor pens subject to the approval of the town planner.
Now, this is, I only put that in because I wasn't sure if you guys are going to require this. I think most of it is blocked from the road. So the only side that is visible would be, basically you would, you can't really see it. It would be from the other, the neighboring property, which is also blocked by a refuse container and a fence, I think, is there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think that it's probably not really required, but I wanted to give you the opportunity to think about that.
Do you have a particular landscaping plan in mind?
It, excuse me. It already has a lot of landscaping, so if you guys require more, it's not a problem. The trees are pretty, so I could just add more.
I, I don't object to having, having this subject to the approval of the town planner and then you can exercise appropriate discretion, if that's all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Number two, a monitored fire alarm system be provided for the building. Number three, a Knox box be provided with appropriate keys to unlock any door of the building. Number four, approval of the Duchess County Health Department.
And five, subject to the approval of the zoning board of appeals.
Very good. Thank you. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. May I have a second for this resolution?
Second.
Thank you, Ed.
Can I just, I'm sorry, can I ask a question? Michelle, what was the closest residence? Do we need to put hours of operation here too for the dogs?
So the closest residence in this case is across 82.
Okay.
Directly across the street, but it is across 82.
Okay. Which is going to have traffic and other noise regardless. Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
It's otherwise pretty much an industrial area. So we'll do a roll call vote. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Donald Pepe.
Aye.
John Geovagnoli.
Aye.
And John Eichman, I'm an aye. Passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Happy holidays.
You too.
Okay. The... Yes, sir?
In previous discussions, she was going to provide sprinkler system for the building and I didn't hear that in the resolution.
Oh, so, excuse me. Is, is there an existing sprinkler system in the building or are you providing one?
There should be an existing everything. There's a huge secure, there's not?
I don't think so. I don't know.
All right, next time.
I know whatever they're not, whatever they're not leaving, I plan on replacing. So I have like a whole company quoting me on things because the pediatric people moved out. So they were in the process of taking everything when we went.
Okay. So...
So you're requiring, you're requiring a sprinkler system in the building?
Well, we can't require it because, unless it's a code, which has to be reviewed by your code person. We're requesting it. We've already had one serious fire in that building years ago when they did the, made it the children's medical place. That was before my time on the board, so I don't know. But to the best of my knowledge, from fire department standpoint, there's no sprinkler system in there. So.
Well, what's the town code for it?
Um, I don't know.
We have a coded person that'll weigh in on that. I can't speak to that.
It'd be all right if we add an additional condition to the resolution that will review the code and if it requires sprinklers, it'll be required to be installed.
I believe they got to get a fit-out permit.
That would be done anyway as part of the building permits that you'll need to add.
Okay. So we don't need to amend the resolution?
Thank you. Sorry.
You're, you're welcome.
No problem.
There was a fire there?
Oh, yes.
I didn't know that.
I saw your pictures.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Mother's...
Okay. The next item that's on for discussion is stack and store. I think, did we receive some new material somewhat late for this meeting? So we may not have, we may not have a full review that we've done by our professionals or by the board members. board members?
My name is Chris Palowski. I'm a licensed professional engineer with solely engineering, here on behalf of the applicant BDC Holdings. I'm going to talk about 1088, 1090, 1092, 1094, and 1096 Route 82, the proposed self-storage facility. Before you last time, we didn't receive several comments from Fire Advisory Board, the Water Department, two different reviewing agencies, and also questions from the board. I apologize, we did submit responses last week. I'm going to go over a bulk of the changes that were incorporated as part of those responses. I'm going to run through a presentation on the updated plans, and then I'm going to ask Cosmo Marfion and the applicant to come up and speak about the operations of the facility, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. So there was several comments about the application that we received last time. The bulk of the changes that we did to the site was we moved the building forward. By moving the building forward, we were able to widen the fire lane in the rear of the site. We also were able to provide a dedicated loading space, so now we have a 10-foot-wide fire lane, and there's a 12-by-50 loading space, and another fire lane that's 12 feet wide. In addition, we converted one of the rear parking spaces to a designated SU30, which is a small box truck parking space. So not only do we have the designated loading zone, we also have an additional parking space where you now could park like a U-Haul vehicle. We also added significant evergreen screening to the rear of the building and along the side of the building. I'll go over that in the landscape plan here in just a moment. We also changed the fence around the stormwater basins to a split rail with a black vinyl mesh. We've used this design in several athletic fields, and you can barely notice the black vinyl mesh, and the split rail fence blends right in and makes it more of a residential feel, as opposed to the chain link that was previously approved, or previously proposed, excuse me. We also added a fire hydrant to the site. We added several items the fire department was looking for, including the knock box and other items like that, and we added two additional egress doors to the rear of the building. So now we have, in addition to the previously one proposed, we now have three means of egress to the rear of the building from previously. And we did not change any of the parking. We did revise the site access drives and the circulation patterns around the building to accommodate a WB50 tractor-trailer, so that can get into the site and navigate around the building. There is a planned truck turning TT-3, which demonstrates this movement. So again, we're here to talk about stack and store in Route 82 East Fishkill. The site is located along Route 82. There is Clover Branch Road to the north, and then intersection that's signalized, and we are currently proposing an 82,700-square-foot self-storage facility with two access drives, no outdoor storage, and no overhead roll-up doors access from the side. So their only means to access the units would be internal to the building. There's 25 parking spaces, 58 land bank parking spaces, for a total of 83 proposed parking So this is our site plan. As mentioned, we have two proposed access drives. This one's shown here, to the south. When we widened the drives, we also had to add multiple curbs to accommodate the WB50 tractor-trailer to move throughout the site. So that's what you see, shown on the northern drive here. And again, we did push the building forward, so you now have a full 10-foot-wide fire lane in the rear, and a 12-foot fire, an additional 12-foot fire lane here, a 12-by-50 loading space, and then a large, enlarged parking spot that can accommodate a small box truck. We did not change the number of parking spaces that was previously proposed. We did do some stormwater basin redesign, but the locations of the basins are still in the same spot. And the split rail fence changes that I mentioned earlier are located around the basins, so in the front here and along the side. And the egress doors that we added, so previously there was just one main set of egress doors in the rear here, we've now added one door here, and an additional door here, so there's three means of egress in and out of the building in the rear. So this is our grading and drainage plan. So the low point of the site is located in the bottom of your screen here. It's about elevation 282. The site climbs in grade significantly, so in the rear, it's elevation 314, so there's a 32-foot grade change from the road to the rear of the site. We proposed a series of stormwater ponds. There was comments from the reviewing engineer about our calculations, which we revised and responded back to. Thank you for providing the comments. We also provided sections through the site, which I'll get to in just a second, and we also did provide a earthwork operations memorandum. So by moving the building forward, we were able to decrease the amount of cut material or export material for the site, down to just shy of 13,000 cubic yards. Per my calculations, it's approximately 700 and, 730 truckloads, spread over a three-month period. This is an average of two trucks in and out per hour, per day. So the truck traffic is not significant, and easily can be accommodated on the surrounding road networks. So again, the site slopes up from the road. The building is built into the hill, so the first floor elevation is 288. Again, we're at 282 at the road. There's an 11-foot floor-to-floor, so as you drive up both sides of the building, the grade climbs, and in the rear, it's access from 299 elevation. So in the front, we're at 288, in the rear, we're at 299. The back of the site's at 314, just to provide some context to the elevations across the site. So these are some of the cross-sections that we prepared, so I apologize, they were so large I had to split them into two. So this is actually one entire cross-section from front to back. So you'll notice the 282 elevation down here in the front of the screen, and then this continues. You see the building and the grade change in the back, and then you see how the grade continues to climb, and there's an existing wooded buffer towards the rear, and then you have the property line at elevation 308 or 310 at the end of the section. Excuse me. I'd also like to point out that we have 200 and just shy of 235 feet from our building to the rear property line, and we have just shy of 62 feet from the side of the building to the property line. Excuse me. So that was a cross-section from the front of the road to the rear of the site, east-west, if you will. This cross-section is north-south, so this is going sideways through the building. So you see the property line here. We're going to talk about the evergreen screen that we added in just a second. You have our drive, and then you have the building. This distance is approximately just shy of 62 feet. Then you have the building that extends across the screen, and you have another drive, some more screening, and then existing natural wooded buffer that remained to the other property line on the other side. This is our soil erosion sediment control plan, so there's your standard silt fence, your anti-tracking pad construction entrance. There are going to be trucks coming in and out of here, so we are going to be spraying those trucks down, make sure there's no dust on the site, so much dust, make sure to minimize the amount of dust generated, make sure we're not tracking any dirt onto Route 82. We have a series of stormwater basins. There's a material stockpile for any topsoil that's stripped off the site. There's also another demolition plan that was submitted, because there are some foundation remnants and existing structures on the property that will be removed as part of our application. So this is our site utility plan. There is water available in the street. We did supply demand figures to the East Fishkill Water District. They have not gotten back to us yet, but again, we did just submit last week, so we weren't expecting a response.
I'll just take exception. We got, like, flow rates, but not daily demand, which we asked for. I reviewed that today, so...
Apologize. So our MEP is still working on daily demand, so we did provide flow rates, excuse me. Thank you for the correction. But we, our MEP engineer is still working on the finalized calculations, but...
They tried to rationalize it based on the percentage of this building to some other building, three stories versus two stories, but that doesn't mean anything without knowing the other building's footprint size, so...
Correct.
It's lacking in some detail.
So the daily, the daily demand on these buildings is...
Irregardless, we asked for it, we haven't gotten it. That's the point I want to make.
Thank you. So there is water available, which you'll be tapping into. There's going to be a domestic water line and a fire service line. The building is fully sprinkled. In response to comments brought by the fire department, we did add a fire hydrant near the site entrance in the north, so that's located right here. So we will be proposing that. There is no sewer available, so we are proposing a septic system that is subject to review and approval by the Duchess County Health Department. We are proposing a underground propane tank for gas or heating the building. There is an electric transformer that's going to be tapped off a utility pole in the street, and I believe that covers all the utilities at this point. And again, all those connections, besides the septic, come off the street and enter the building on the northern side. So this is our landscape plan. I wanted to talk about some of the trees and the screening that we added. So in the front of the building, we added additional overstory trees that you see in the front here. We previously had a few, and we added some more to provide some more decorative cover. We added 15 shrubs to the front, another 10 or 15 grasses supplementing around the site, and then we added over 20 evergreen screening trees that you see along this property border here, along the back, and along here. And again, this entire portion of the site is currently wooded in the rear, and we're not planning to disturb that. So that wooded buffer, I'd say, is at least 150, 200 feet, is going to remain as is. So, but we did want to be responsive to comments and make sure that we were providing adequate screening along the northern property border, as there are residential houses to the north and to the east, so that's on this side of the screen and the top of the screen. And again, there are residential houses across the street, so we added the nice overstory trees in front of the building to provide a more decorative look. So this is our lighting plan. We have a total of four proposed pole lights. They're all located in front of the site. So you see one here, one here, one here, and one here. The rest of the lights are wall-mounted lights and canopy lights on the building. In just a moment, the applicant will discuss when those lights turn on and off, because I know there was a question about, are they 24 hours? When are they on, when are their hours of operation and things of that nature? And again, that'll be addressed in just a moment. But I do want to show that there's a line here. This is our zero-foot candle line, so every, all the light that is produced by these poles, and they are, the fixtures are dark sky compliant, so they point down, not up and out, so you don't get blinded by the light if you're a neighbor, if you will. The zero-foot candle line is contained entirely within our property, so that's, again, this dark black line on the outer edge, and that basically means that there's zero light amended outside of this radius or area, as shown on our lighting plan. I think that is it on my end. I did, just want to say that we would, did go before the ARB a month or two ago, and we did make several changes a month or two ago, not in the latest iteration. The only thing we changed in the latest iteration from a building standpoint was the egress doors and some of those other comments from the fire department. But the building has been changed to be a Class A resident, to give a Class A residential feel. It's meant to look like residential housing almost. Originally, we were proposing a more standard, commercial-type facility look, if you will, and we did change that in response to the architectural review board seemed very receptive to our changes that we're currently putting forward. So with that, I would like to welcome up Cosmo Marfion of the applicant to speak a little bit about the operations of the site and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I'm Cosmo Marfion. I'm the president of the BDC Group. Currently, as you may or may not know, we have three of these facilities in operation in New York, and Saratoga, Schenectady, and Patterson. I think some of you went to see our Patterson site. So operations, it's very simple, simply, there's, we usually have two employees that work seven days a week, you know, five days, but they alternate, so that we have coverage, especially during, you know, during the first two or three, four years, making sure that there's availability for folks to come in, and if there's any questions, answered. And then after that, you know, we may, we have, we may have, like, limited hours on the weekends, like 8 to 2, or something like that. The, the facility is accessed anywhere from 6 to 10 p.m., 6 a.m. to 10 p.m. It's all, it's all guarded by, you know, access control and access control with the gate, you know, to enter the rear of the facility and the doors. And we have probably 20, 30, 40 cameras around to make sure that, you know, there's no blind corners or alleys or anything like that. We like to keep the, you know, we like to keep the facilities, the facility lit, you know, for safety reasons. We probably, at least till 10 p.m., you know, those downlights in the parking lot will be on. And then after that, you know, we could adjust the intensity. Maybe if some of them go off, some of them go on, keep, stay on just for safety. You know, we don't want, we don't want the back of the building just to be dark, right? We don't use wall packs, so we don't have, we don't have to worry about seeing the light from a distance, and that's it. You know, these, these facilities don't generate a lot of traffic, if any, you know? Maybe, we should look at, we should, we should look at the manual.
We did a trip gen.
We did trip gen?
Yeah.
So what is it, two to three trips?
At least, yeah.
Yeah, sub-five trips per peak hour. It's, there's not a lot of action. Once people store their stuff here, usually during the week, there's not a lot of action. Maybe on a Saturday, you'll see, like, five to 10 cars in the parking lot, just grabbing things out. You know, during the holidays, maybe somebody's grabbing their, their Christmas ornaments or their holiday ornaments. You know, spring cleanup. During the winter, it's pretty dormant. You don't get a lot. So that's it. And I'm here to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. So do, did I understand correctly, there will be no access between the hours of 10 p.m. and 6 a.m.?
Yes.
Okay, which is a change, I think, right? Office hours, what are those?
Office hours are usually 9 to 6, 7 p.m. during the weekend, and like, 9 to 5 on the weekends.
Have you had your first meeting yet with the New York State DOT?
Not yet. Okay. So we'll, we'll have that.
That's an important meeting. I think, you know, we mentioned at the last meeting that the DOT doesn't look kindly on two entrances to a given property, and, and I think they'll, they may have some questions for you with regards to your stormwater retention basins.
Mm-hmm.
Questions or comments from board members? Excuse me, Dave, please.
Have you, last time, we talked about the gate access for the fire department? Have you come up with a plan for that, or...
Well, usually we have a knock, knock box that'll have a clicker for the...
That's fine for getting in the building.
Or clicker. But they have a clicker for the gate.
We need...
Because if the fire alarm goes off, all, all gates and entrances...
Okay. Yeah, we programmed that that way. But we've also had knock boxes that have the clicker for the, for the gates. We have the click, and, and code to get in, or a FOB to get in. Yeah, but we could program, we've done it, we've done it before, where we program where as soon as the fire alarm goes on, everything, everything releases.
Somebody calls, and the fire alarm hasn't gone off, or the EMS needs to get in for some reason. If you're using a gate code, we can, all of our fire apparatus have tablets that when we get a call to a certain location, it comes up with any data for that. You can put a gate code in there. The knock box is fine for getting in to the building, but...
We could give you a, yeah, we, we, usually our access control has codes or FOB.
Okay.
You know, so...
Yeah, FOB's no good. I mean, you'd have to provide about 50 of them for us, so...
We'd rather give you the code.
I figured.
Okay, questions or comments by board members?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify the truck traffic. You indicated it would be two trips per day over a period of 90 days, but that doesn't sound like how you would actually clear a site like that.
No, no, no. Yeah.
Sorry, for the record, it's, it's Chris Palowski, it's solely engineering. It's two trips in and out per hour. So two trips in, two trips out per hour for, it's three months, but it's not that many working days. I wrote down in a memorandum, but essentially, again, it's two trips in, two trips out per hour.
So are you proposing you're going to limit yourself to that, or that's just the capacity of what the site would allow you to fill trucks and get them out?
Yeah, I mean, what, what usually happens is that you, you hire maybe four trucks for the day, or five trucks for the day, right? And we would love to get two trips per hour, but it depends where they dump. It also depends, like, we usually, you know, you probably have one large machine on site, just, you know, just, just, just floating it up. So it, it won't cause a lot of traffic, because it, there's usually, like, a good hour between trips, so if we could get four trucks to do four loads a day, that's even less than what you're saying. Four to five loads a day, that would be even less than what you're saying, yeah. And we'll do, we'll do some prep first, you know, to get some stockpiled so that we could get it going. But we've, we've moved 25,000 in the Patterson site, 20,000, 20 to 25,000 on that site, off, off-site, so it wasn't bad. And that was 20, Route 22 is, there's always a lot of traffic on there. It was, it's gonna, this is gonna be, I think, a lot easier than Route 22.
Other questions or comments?
We had also had some questions regarding the, the connection to the water main on the opposite side of 82.
Well, we'll work through that. We'll work through that internally.
We have some.
Go ahead.
What's your, what's your building height now? Just so you know.
There's an average cal provided on our architectural plans, I believe, but I'd have to double-check, but it's 34, 35 feet in the front. When you run the average grade plane cal, it's within the zoning limits, because the rear is tucked in the back there, so...
Right, so you're saying that in some places, it might be higher than that, but average is out to 35?
Correct. It's significantly less than the requirement, yeah.
And then are you, are there, is there going to be any fencing? You're, I know you have a gate on there, but it's not attached to fencing, it's just gated access, there's no fencing?
Yeah, the, the northern, sorry. The northern portion of the site, around the back, and then the rear are all fenced in.
Okay.
There's two gates, essentially, one here to go out, because one-way traffic, and one here to go in.
And did you provide a detail of what the fence looks like?
That fence is chain-linked with privacy slats, but again, we're, if the board would like us to look at a different fence material, we're welcome to do so.
And then your signage, I just want everyone to be clear, because they, they've actually proposed signage, or they're actually showing signage on their building, which means that if you bless the plan, you're blessing that signage. The signage does not meet, currently meet our sign code, so unless you approve it that way, they would have, they can't do it that way. Like, if they came in to Matt and were looking for a sign permit later on, and the reason it doesn't meet our code right now is because we don't allow wall signs that high up technically on the building, so you can decide that that's okay and approve it as part of the site plan, but I just wanted to make you aware that you would be approving that, okay? It's not, wouldn't be, normally, they come in after the fact of a separate sign application to us, but... to us, but in this case, you're actually seeing the signage and you'd be approving that, okay?
Is there no other signage other than, is there a monument?
There is a monument.
There is a monument sign, yeah.
And we did submit a detail of that sign that I believe complies with the regulations because we did check that before.
Right. So, and I think that might be a little larger as well, so I just want you guys to take a look at that. I mean, we haven't, I haven't fully reviewed this because it just came in on Friday, so, but I just want everyone to kind of be aware of what... And the other thing is you're approving a special permit for the excavation of the soil. So it's about, it's 12,000 plus or minus cubic yards of fill that's being removed from the site. And then, I don't know if you saw the comments from Duchess County or not?
I apologize, I did not see those.
We'll make sure you've sent those.
Thank you.
One of their comments, and I don't know how the planning board feels about this, but they were recommending that potentially they get a, you get an easement along the frontage for a future sidewalk. It doesn't mean that you necessarily have one, it just means that in the event that sidewalks are ever extended in this area, you could potentially put a sidewalk there. I know that you added street trees, so that's good. I wanted to see a little bit more landscaping up front. And then what about, I don't know how, I didn't hear you mention, and maybe you did, and I apologize if I missed it. We had that issue with the commercial and the residential districts. Are you staying 100% out of the residential even for the grading?
That is correct. We are 100% out just because the, we sold the building forward to accommodate that. There might be like a small touch of a contour that we are tying into existing, but there's no commercial activity. There's no driveways, there's no sidewalks, there's no building, there's nothing.
And no removal of trees or anything on that?
There's a removal of residential home, but I don't believe that should be an issue. But there's no commercial activity within that zone. We had the, that's why we sold the building forward, but I appreciate the question, so thank you.
So I just wanted to clarify one thing about the sign. So the sign, as we're looking at it right now, does not meet our current code?
Correct.
Okay.
Neither the stack and store or the office sign?
Correct. So what happens is if it comes in as part of a site plan, the planning board has the ability to approve a master signage plan that may or may not meet the code. But if it were to come in after the fact, then Matt would have to look at it. And it's actually not in our zoning code, it's a separate ordinance, the sign ordinance. So Matt would have to look at it separately. But in this case, they're proposing it as part of your, the site plan approval. So when you approve the site plan, you would be approving the signage. And we always approve the location of the monument signs on our site plans, but in this case, they've provided us details, so you, you can look at all of that, okay? Sometimes, usually they don't provide us the details. Usually they're not showing us. They may show us architecturally where a sign would be placed, but they're not typically showing the signage.
So it wouldn't be necessarily like a hardship to remove the stack and store because they're gonna have a monument sign out on the street that would potentially meet the code then?
They, they could have a sign, a monument sign and a wall sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, I think it's important for us to have signs, right? We wanna, we wanna get business. We wanna, we don't want an empty building. We want, we want the project to be successful. Everybody does. I mean, the office sign, we could, that could go away, you know? We could just put a placard. I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty obvious where the office is gonna be. I don't even like that sign, I'll actually tell you the truth.
Well, that's out.
But the stack and store sign, I mean, that, that's important to us. It's important so people, folks could see it as they drive and, and the monument sign, obviously. But yeah, so if we, if we, if we wanted to get rid of a sign, that's, you know, I would be okay getting rid of that office sign. It's pretty blasé anyway, and I'll take it.
So how far off is it, let's say, is it a height thing that is?
I haven't done the calculation, but it's height, it's definitely height on the wall sign.
Height issue on the upper side.
Yeah.
So the monument, we haven't seen the monument sign, but that's just a little bit too big, so they can...
I think it's a little bit too big. I haven't done, I haven't done the full calculation, but I think it might be a little too big.
Is it the height where it's located on the building or the height of the sign itself?
The height, so you're not supposed to have wall signs? I can't remember the exact, 15 feet? It's something like...
Of 15 feet.
Above 15 feet on a, on a building wall.
Okay.
So...
We, we could try to comply with, with the monument sign, you know, unless it's like this small, but we could, we could amend that, that's not a problem.
The monument sign should be relatively easy to comply with, I think.
You're saying I haven't, you and I haven't reviewed this, it just came in on Friday.
Right, yeah, we just, we haven't actually looked, I haven't done any of the calculations, but I'm pretty sure from just doing what I was looking at that we're off, and I just want to make sure you're aware of that. Is the stack and store lit? Is it a lit sign?
The monument sign is lit.
And the wall sign is not?
Wall sign isn't, no.
Now, let me ask you then, do you have any idea what the height is of the sign as we're looking at it, the wall sign, not the office, the stack and store, as we're looking at it right now?
So the signs probably start at 20, 20, 22 feet from the...
Yeah, so it's, it's seven feet over the code.
Well, I'm just wondering if you're getting rid of the sign that says office, if you move the stack and store down to where that office is, maybe that gets you...
Yeah, I mean...
So this is a hugely imposing building for the area that it's in. Everything around it is tiny in comparison to this building, and putting that sign up there so high towering over everything else is even more imposing. I would really love to see this meet our code and do less to impose so much on the neighborhood.
I get it.
And I think it would lend more to the residential feel that you indicated you're really trying to go for on this if you eliminated that kind of signage.
I have another question. I, I know that you're removing a lot of fill, but I think the site kind of goes up from the road, right?
That's correct.
So how much higher is this building going to be on the grade versus all the buildings around it? Because there's been some new construction recently, I can think of a number of examples, where when you're driving into an area, an existing area, Houstonville comes into mind, where there's a gas station that's been mounted and much higher than the surrounding buildings. And it doesn't look right at all. So that's something, Chris, if you could look at that, just make sure...
The back buildings, I mean, the back residential area is much higher, right? So...
But what about on 82? Is it gonna be much higher than...
We're about five feet higher than the road, but it is 100 feet from the road to the building.
Yeah.
So there's, we needed to climb up, and if we go lower, the more material we have to haul out because we're building into a hill, so...
I mean, just across the street, that plaza is already lower, and it's directly across the street. So that plaza is already lower and it's already small. And then this is, I think this is gonna make the church look tiny, which is, has a very steep, kind of big feel to it, but I think it's gonna make it look tiny.
But is the grade level on the opposing side of the street lower? Or is it, is it similar to their side?
Pretty much level.
Yeah, it is.
It's going down really quickly.
Cross 82 is level, but then the hill goes up from there.
I mean, five feet and 100 feet, that's a 5% slope that's essentially flat.
But the sightlines too, from the homes behind the building towards it, do we, have we understand a visual from there?
Yeah, so...
Like, let's say the closest residential home in the back.
So that would be here. You have these existing 60 to 70-foot tall trees. They are even further out of my section that I'm showing here. And then we're, you know, we're down, the back of the building is at 299. Then you add the 13 foot to the parapets, so we're at like 312. So the top of our building is right at the grade, and then you have the 60 to 65-foot tree, well, many, yeah.
235 feet away.
But let's just say, you showed a, a top view of the actual residential home in comparison to the building. Can we see that one more time?
I don't believe I have that. This is the end of the section, there's a property line right here, so...
I think you showed it in the beginning. You had a...
Topographical.
Yeah, right there.
Oh, from the, yeah, so there's a, there's a home here and there's a home here.
So, so you're saying the, the sight line from those particular pieces of property, those residential properties are, are not visible to the building because of the...
The tree line, that's correct. They should, there's a good 150, 200 feet of trees that are gonna remain, less than the building, but yes. Yeah.
They're deciduous, right? They're not evergreen, they're deciduous.
Correct, but there's brush and other thing.
There's a mix, yeah.
Yeah, it's mixed in.
Those houses are higher than the building?
Correct.
At the ground level, I mean?
Yes.
And then in...
The ones to the north?
So the, these slope, this house slopes up with the building, right? So this is down, this is down, this is not higher than the building, this house. That's why we're having the evergreen screening along that side.
Okay. So then again, then looking from the, the Route 82 side towards the building?
Yep.
And then those commercial buildings to the right of it as we're facing it?
These down to the, on the screen?
Yeah, so are they, what's the total height? So you're saying the building platform is gonna be five feet?
Yep.
And then the building itself, what's the highest point on the front of that building? Not, not average or anything?
34, 5 feet.
Okay. And then do we know what the heights are in the building to the right of it, let's say? Is that the church or what is that to the right?
It's an, it's a car dealership. Car dealership.
So they're like really short buildings, right?
Yeah. And then you've, and then you've got a...
Church.
The church, but there's also a...
The vets or...
Church is tall.
Veteran, veterinarian service, yeah.
And there's two very small homes right across, directly across the street, which are pretty close to the road.
Yeah.
I think what might be helpful is if we ask the applicant to provide various representative sections across the road, like say, at each of the three residents across from this proposed building, just do some sample section lines to get an idea of how high each...
Yeah, the sightline.
How sits next to the other one, because what we're seeing here, just seeing the, you know, the east side, we're not seeing both sides.
Because that's what I'm saying, like, this, it's definitely a, a big building and it's imposing comparatively speaking to what's left there.
Structures, yeah.
Yeah, so alls I'm saying is that, Michelle made the point that if they're adding another five feet, it doesn't, you're right, it doesn't sound like a lot, but on top of a 30-something, what'd you say, 37 or 39?
34.
And then comparing it to what's next to it, it's like all of a sudden you're coming upon the scene, it's like pow, you know?
It's gonna be very similar to 9D in Houstonville. If you go there now, it's a perfect example of it. They're building the gas station. You'll see that the gas station is mounted, their older homes located around it, it, it looks funny.
It's like this, you know, it's like, you know...
And you're sitting, it looks...
And that gas station is only about five or six feet above 9D.
Yeah, and what is it, maybe 5,000 square feet, the building? This, this is a much larger structure. And this is two stories or three?
It's correct, two.
Two stories.
Two stories.
Two stories in the front, one story in the back.
And it is built into the hill. So the whole entire back portion here is one level essentially separated.
Yeah, but what you're seeing when you're coming down Route 82 is a massive building compared to all these little tiny buildings all the way down, and open land too, all the way down 82. There's nothing else even remotely on that scale.
You're not gonna miss this.
And what thereafter, like the zoning is, because they mentioned they butt up, is it the rear part that's the residential zoning?
Yes. Yes.
And then what about to the, the other side, not the side where the church and the veterinarian are, is that also residential?
Yeah, there's a house next to it.
There's one house, correct.
The north is, it's residence all around, right?
Yeah, that's what I mean, so on that other side, so...
But on the other side, abutting 82, that's not residential zoning, only because there's a house there, right? That's, that's commercial zoning, just a house.
This is a commercial plaza, I believe, right here.
No, I'm talking about on your side of the street, just above.
This is residential here, and then in the back, and then you have commercial here and then commercial here. This is, I believe, existing.
Like, does consistency, you know, could potentially take place thereafter, but not necessarily because it's residential and that's the end of it, so...
I'm not sure, I have to check, but I know that this is residential.
That's commercial.
That's commercial.
One in the corner.
This, this one in the corner here is commercial, right?
Yeah.
Right. I mean, it makes sense for abutting 82, it's all commercial. Right, okay. I mean, we are within zone, you know, we're not asking for any variances.
I think though the sightline information would be important here.
We'd be happy to extend our cross-sections to go a little farther.
Yeah.
Great.
There was also a question last time about parking, because they were like 25 spaces short or something like that.
Yeah, so the parking, I mean, the parking, honestly, the, these facilities are usually overparked because there's never, but the, I think the bigger issue, and I think you've added, it looks like you've added a truck space?
Correct.
Is that there wasn't really any larger parking spaces? I'm not sure, I mean, I'm gonna leave it up to Brendan to take a look at whether or not the functionality of all of that, but, you know, the way I see these facilities used is that people, if they're bringing in trucks, they kind of park them along the side rather than in the spots themselves, but, you know, I think it, you need to have, certainly need to have space for a truck in case there's any conflicts and you need to put the truck in a spot, right?
We essentially have two spaces. We have a designated 12 by 50 loading zone and then a, another spot that we converted to fit a U-Haul truck, box truck. So essentially, we have now two dedicated truck parking spaces, if you will, so...
So we can just have Brendan look at that and see if that's typical and if that's how it would function, if it would function well?
I have a couple of questions. Your HVAC, where is that gonna be located?
That is located along the northern side of the building here, and we did screen it, and there's a fence around it. So it's now, they're, they're ground-mounted units.
Ground-mounted, okay.
Yes.
Because it's a pretty sizable building, so I don't know if those units generate much noise and whether that needs to be looked at.
We could give you the specs on it. It's, it's compliant, I mean, it's...
Is there gonna be a generator for the building?
Yes. Do we need a generator?
We don't, we're not showing one at the moment, but if there is one, we can add one to the site plan.
No, no, we don't, we don't need a generator, no. Because we didn't do it on the last building, right?
Okay. Back to the soil permit, I just think we should be mindful of the timing that, you know, we don't get a mountain stockpile there for some extended period of time.
Understood, yeah.
Because you're in a rush to get the foundation in when we're looking at a pile for two years, you know?
Understood.
No.
Some consideration to that when a permit's issued. What, what's the maximum size of the storage units on the inside, maximum size?
10 by 30.
10 by 30. Because there was a comment from Hudson Valley Engineering about we wanted a WSB 62 truck. And I think the reply was that, given the size of the units, it wouldn't make sense for a big truck like that to show up. And I just don't get the rationale for that. With 10 by 30 units, you could always rent three units if you needed to. So I'm just trying to understand that.
I've never seen a 62-foot truck.
I've never seen a 62-foot truck.
Well, like, say a Mayflower shows up cross-country because they want to move into one of our very nice neighborhoods.
They just wouldn't go in the back, they wouldn't be allowed to go in the back, they could just...
Are you going to be there to direct them when they show up, or?
Well, we'll have, we'll have staff on site.
Yeah, I don't know that that's something that we can consent to. I think you need to take a second look at that.
So...
So what is that? Your typical end user is not a Mayflower moving cross-country?
Of course not.
Correct.
Well, you don't have to move across country, you can move from Florida, you can move from Connecticut, but the point is, you have a very large storage facility, what prohibits a Mayflower truck from showing up?
They can't, they can't get around it.
Doesn't mean they don't show up. These guys plug in their GPS, we see it at Amazon right now, they plug in their GPS, and they show up to a site, and then they try to figure it out. Some speak English, some don't even speak English.
I, I, I would, I would say that whoever...
Simple solution is you design it to handle that, that truck.
Oh, okay, I mean, can we design it to handle, I mean, it'd just be more blacktops?
The problem when you do that is you're adding more impervious, it'd be a significant, because you need a huge swing radius to get in a W 67.
Or you shrink the size of the building. You don't have to decide that right now, but that's...
Yeah, I just, I, we just, I just...
Again, I'll defer to the board, but that's, that's my opinion. There's nothing that prohibits that large truck from showing up.
Got it. I mean, we, we have three facilities, and I don't think any of them are designed.
Just like we have Dunkin' Donuts that say, you know, tractor trailers don't show This is a storage outfit, and there's, there's big storage trucks out there.
Well, there's people that can rent moving trucks.
Well, I'm talking about the big, you know, that travels some distance, so they can't get in.
What about corporate people that use storage units to store all their...
Well, we won't allow it to, you know, around the building, it's a machine there.
W 67, this is a massive turn around. So additional...
So Scott, are you saying that there should be signs prohibiting a truck like that from trying to circumnavigate the building and stay in the front, or are you saying you want to post that they can't bring them in?
Well, I think the last thing you want is for a truck to pull in there and get stuck, you know?
I, I think, I think whoever, whoever...
I don't know how you prohibit them from showing up.
You just put it in there at least, we're not allowed to have those, these trucks.
Sounds good.
I mean, any, anybody...
You think anybody's reading that detail in a lease? When they call that trucking company from California, this, I need to get my stuff moved, oh, by the way, don't send a W 62 truck to my site? I don't think so.
They won't even know what it means.
I, I've, I've been in the business for 20 years, I've never seen a problem with, with that, I mean...
I mean, what about the tractor trailers that bring your stuff to your house, and then the rest of it, and they do two trips, and then your stuff, half of it goes to storage and half of it goes to your house?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, in our, in our leases, we'll, we have a specified what they can bring, what they can't bring, who can bring it, what size trucks they can use, when...
I don't see how that works, I just, I just don't. It's just, it just falls outside of the control of what you, as a landlord, can...
I mean, but anything can show up, right?
Anything could show up?
Anything can show up, I mean, we could just, I mean, anything can show up.
That's the concern.
Right, but any, anything, I mean, for any project, anything can show up.
I haven't heard a good reason why you won't provide that circulation, other than you have to make your ponds bigger or your building smaller, but, I mean, you know, I haven't really heard a good reason why you can't do that.
Let's take a look at it, but...
I'd even go so far as if you can have a mountable curb in a grassed area for that once in a while, but there's got to be a way that they can get through there, even if they rut up the grass a little bit or something, that they can get through there, you know, that they're not, not stung.
I mean, if we have, if we have gates, they're not going to go around the building, so maybe perhaps...
But the last thing we want is a tractor trailer sitting on 82, not knowing what to do, can't get in, he's driven three hours to get here, that's just not a good plan.
But, but if, if we design something for a tractor trailer, we'll design it so that they can only stay in the front of the building. Why do we have to...
I think we can take a look at that, no, certainly.
Can you access the front of the building for storage if, if the back is clogged up with other people on a Saturday?
Yeah, I'm not, you don't misunderstand me, I'm saying you necessarily have to circulate the whole building, as long as they can pull off 82, get through that site, do their business, get back on 82, that, that's all we're looking for.
So at this point, the WB 50 truck can come, can go through the site and around the building, there's a truck turning plan provided. I'm not so sure that a 67, though, is warranted, 62? I mean, still, that plus a cab, you're talking to a 70-foot-long truck, to get that into the site, we'd have to pull the pavement way back, and that can get them in, and then I'm just worried trying to get them out the other entrance, and then now there's questions also about the two entrances, we have to go down to one.
I was just going to say...
I don't know how we're going to be getting WB 67 in and out.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
62.
I would encourage you to meet with DOT as soon as possible, because that, that will, we really can't go much further, because if the site plan has to change to one entrance, we don't want to have a public hearing on two entrances, right? So we would like to have some indication from DOT if they're going to allow the two entrances, because we don't want to have to hold open the public hearing.
We could bring also a copy of the lease to show you guys, I mean, we've...
I, I don't know that that, how effective that is, honestly, no disrespect, but I just don't know the effectiveness of that. Okay, anything else from board members or professionals? Yes, Dave?
With no generator, how are we going to get the gates and the doors open and power outage?
Yeah, we've done it before, it's probably battery, something, battery backup or something, yeah.
Got to be something.
Yeah. The lights in the building, they're all got battery backups, yeah.
I understand that, but your, all your doors are electronic and, and your gates are electronic, so, with, you know, with electric motors.
We'll make sure that that's addressed in the construction plans.
So we'll take a look at your latest submission and get you some comments back, your latest submission.
I think just to clarify, too, the biggest holdup to setting the public hearing is the lack of communication with DOT at this point.
That, that really is an important aspect.
Sure.
So, and, and I think, too, the, the cross-sections that we discussed, that Christian mentioned before, it would be great to be able to see those at the next meeting.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, have a happy holiday, everybody.
Happy holidays. Good evening, Steve Wilson with Bowler on behalf of the applicant Lidl. It's been a few months since we saw you last, and I just want to kind of bring you up on several things and talk about maybe some next steps and where we're at. So since we last met you, I think it was probably July, we have made a submission to the town that includes, per either staff or board feedback, a water tank relocation plan, because there's an existing water tank on the property that we're relocating within the park, a little, several hundred feet north, the current owner's doing that. We've also provided some additional design renderings, a first draft of Stormwater Management Report, an updated traffic study, which has been updated to reflect other projects in the queue, per our discussions with the town, and a preliminary plan set that includes site layout plan, grading of drainage, utility, landscape, and lighting plans. The site plan you have up in front of you, the plan has not changed since we last saw you, in terms of the layout, building, building heights, et cetera, it's all the same as when we last talked to you. I know there's been a lot of activity behind the scene, well, not behind the scenes, but with the town and the current owners and DEC and IBM on this, the monitoring wells on the property, based on my understanding, it seems like there's a path forward for partial removal of some of those monitoring wells that are no longer needed, and then possibly relocating some of those monitoring wells to our parking areas on the site. So that, the particulars of that plan are still being worked out, but there seems to be a path forward, it just, the devil's always in the details, so the current owner and IBM are working with DEC on that plan. We also completed fieldwork on archaeological study we knew was going to be required, and it looks like we're going to be okay there, but final results are still pending. The town had also requested we'd likely require a noise study for the project, we have that just about to get underway. We submitted a wetland permit application to DEC for disturbance up along the top, top of the sheet there, we encroach into a DEC wetland buffer and a little bit into the wetland itself. We have first round of comments back from them, so we're working on addressing that and possibly tweaking that layout a little bit to reduce some of those impacts from the site plan. So I know staff probably hasn't a chance to review it, but it's a big lot of paper we submitted, but I was hoping, based on what we submitted, we could get detailed review of the plan, storm art plan, traffic study, all that review started, and also wanted to confirm where we left off with seeker, if we, we done lead agency coordination? We haven't done that, okay, so if we could get that process started as well, that would be great, and our plan with some of the other boards we know are involved, we have comments from the fire advisory board, we're targeting to get a response together for that and be ready to talk to them on the February 6th meeting, and possibly, if we can, get in front of the architecture review board to start that conversation at the January meeting.
So we, we were just talking about circulation, I think there may be some aspects of the application that are missing.
Okay.
Or would be able to circulate.
Okay.
So I think until, I think maybe there's some forms, and maybe, I don't, I think maybe a fee has been paid, so I don't, I don't think we'll be able to circulate.
I thought the fee, I thought, well, you may know more than me, because I thought the fee had come, I thought the fee issue had been taken care of, I know there'd been some discussions with Lidl and the town about, you know, partial payments, and I thought that had been...
I think they maybe gave us a copy of a check, but...
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I, I thought that had, we moved past that.
We got here tonight, because I think they gave us...
Oh, okay. You know more than me, sorry, I thought that would, had come through.
And then just before we can circulate?
Yep.
I know you're, you said you have a relocation plan for the, for the tank, and I just want to make sure, because I haven't looked at it in detail yet, are, is I park party to this application then, because there, wherever you're relocating to has to be part of this application and would have to be part of the circulation materials?
The, what are we, trying to fast-forward here through the plans here, hold on one second, it was included in the, the package we... I need a laser pointer, but... Here's a site down here with the existing water tank, and they're proposing to move it to north of the site, so there's a plan in there that includes that.
Yeah, because that would have to be part of the whole seeker review?
Understand.
Yeah.
And wouldn't the, the, there's obviously test monitoring wells that exist on this site right now, so they're proposing that there's going to be movement of those wells. So it's my understanding with regards to that, that if you're going to build over something that was tested prior to, then you're going to put a building over it, then it would be considered that they'd have to have indoor air quality monitoring wells if they're going to build over that, I would think, so wouldn't that have to be kind of...
I don't know if you're cap, though, I mean, if you're cap prop, I don't know what you're proposing.
It doesn't matter, if you're building over it, even though you're, you're building over it, like you, you'll see in, in certain townships, like they're having trouble with the building up in Poughkeepsie right now, where they built over a landfill, and the DEC used to require that it was just outdoor monitoring, and then the rules changed for indoor air quality monitoring, because you've built over something. So alls I'm saying is, and I don't know, I'm just kind of...
They may have to do vapor intrusion system.
That's what I'm saying, they do these, these indoor air quality monitoring tests, so I'm just saying, if that would have to be part of the review and the process here...
So they're working with, they're trying to, I think, hammer this out with DEC and a parallel process to us.
Okay.
They've been talking to DEC, and I think there, there's a bunch of different options being considered, including maybe they don't need all of the monitoring wells that are out there, and then the relocation of some of the monitoring wells, so I think there's a bunch of different things being talked about. But DEC would definitely be an involved agency with the environmental review and would definitely review any proposals that were made.
I just wouldn't want to stop progress, I just would like to understand how that goes forward.
Because I understand, the, the wells aren't for monitoring, say, like, many times you see for contamination within the property, they're really to monitor groundwater, make sure how the groundwater is moving around the larger parcel.
Make sure the plume isn't expanding from under the...
Exactly, so, there's a, there's, the thinking is that a lot of these are redundant, and they're not needed anymore, they understand what's going on out there, so we can reduce that number and not have them in the building footprint, and we can put some in parking lot areas that they're easily accessible from the surface, and, yeah, and I understand your concern, but, yeah, vapor intrusion is required based on the final agreement with, between IBM and DEC and the owner, absolutely, that would be part of the, the package.
Okay. Can you just refresh my memory on, like, primary access to the site, for the big trucks anyway, not necessarily for employees, but...
So basically, either, I'm sorry, page left, all the way over on, left of the sheet there, there'd be the entrance there, and basically, we're looking at, I'm sorry, back that up, I'm sorry, back that up, we're looking, right here, I'm just, sorry, entrance here with an intent of counterclockwise circulation around the site.
Within the site, what about accessing it from 84? How do you actually, what's the proposed route to get to that entrance from 84?
Well, I expect they're going, they're going to come into the site from over here or at the main entrance of the park over there, one or the other, I guess it depends on their, their knowledge.
Well, I think we'll weigh in on that, our preference is to come in off, directly off line, come to the left, so to, to not have that turning movement on South Drive. And I'm sure there's a way to sign it and delineate the curbing and things of that nature to promote that, so...
What was the results of the traffic study, including other pending projects? Truck traffic, trucks per hour?
Oh, boy, right off the top of my head, I don't know the number, trucks per hour, but, give me one second, little distribution. Looks like in a neighborhood of about a, potential of 150 in the morning peak hour, I'm sorry, that's total vehicles during the morning peak, you'd be around a...
This is just for your project, not with others?
That's right, that's what we would be generating, that's right, yeah.
That's trucks and employees.
Yes, exactly, during the morning peak, yeah, that'd be the biggest generator.
Trucks and employees.
Yeah, yeah.
Is this a 24/7 operation?
It is, yes.
How many employees per shift?
I think they're still kind of pinning that down, but we're, now we're assuming a little over 100.
Per shift?
Yeah. I think 100, two shifts with that, that load, and then there'd be an overnight shift, that's kind of a skeleton crew, yeah.
Do you have, do you have onsite first A D M S facilities, employees?
Yeah, I'm sure they do, yes, yeah.
All right.
I think, I think we got a lot of those comments from the fire board a few months back, and they're working on preparing a detailed response to all those, because they're still kind of fleshing out the interior of the building and that design, so by the time we get back in front of you in February, we're going to have answers to all those questions.
Okay, all right, yeah, if you could include in that, if you have a similar-sized facility, the number of ambulance responses you get to your facilities?
Yeah, I think our intent is, Lidl's going to bring in an operational person, that's somebody that actually runs one of their other facilities, so they can really get into the weeds on how the things are going to operate and answer those questions for you, yeah.
You're not going to have any fuel storage onsite, are you?
No.
And the other question, I think we came up at one point in time, was the overall height, what is the highest point of the, of the building?
It's this corner, right here, maybe eight, about eight inches. We lowered it from some, some previous presentations, because I think the fire department was concerned about, they didn't have that capacity, but it's that one corner there and the rest of the, most of the rest of the building's in that 60-odd foot range.
Okay, and that met...
Yeah.
...the requirements.
We're matching the...
That, though?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I just knew there was a question about it, that's all.
And you have an onsite tank for fire protection, too, right?
That's the plan, yes, right, and the... Right there, okay, thank you.
That's how large?
That's for fire...
How large?
That, we're still sizing with the MEP, but the intent is to have an onsite storage tank, yeah.
We'll have some further comments on that, once you come to our meeting in February.
Yeah, sure, yep. So there's no clarification yet on the wetlands, encroachment? Uh, they really want us to get, we had about six truck spaces up on the top of the page that encroach into the wetland, and we think we're going to be able to find a home for them somewhere else, and limit the disturbance to a buffer-related impact, so we're still working through those details. Other questions or comments?
Other questions or comments? Very good, so, when will we next see you, Steve?
Architecture review board, is it possible for us to still get on that agenda for January?
So, I mean, technically, they're not, I mean, they submitted a formal application, we just haven't received the check, okay?
Right.
So, why don't we, why don't we refer them to the ARC in the event that we get the check in the next few days, which we're hoping to get, and then we can schedule them.
And you'll have elevations?
Yes.
For the ARC?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'll accept a motion to refer the applicant to the ARC.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and the town board will be the lead agency, as I recall, is that right?
Yeah, we're gonna do a dual process, like we've done with the others.
Okay, excellent.
So if the check comes in in the next few days, would that release to start doing a technical review on what we submitted?
Correct.
Okay, so if it does come in the next few days, you think we'd have comments sent around for the January meeting to look at? All right, so...
I think it comes in, so, I think it comes in, well, when's the January meeting, first of all, wait a minute, just make sure there's enough...
No, but, ARC.
Sixteen.
I would say as long as we get it by Friday.
Friday's the day.
Friday's the day, all right.
I'm talking about the ARC.
So if we, if all things work out, you get the check, we make the ARC, and you start your technical review, then we'll come back next month, and hopefully at that point, you're able to circulate, you've got enough to circulate for lead agency, and we can start getting into leads on some of the technical review, yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Happy holidays.
So I think that brings this meeting to a close, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy Kwanzaa.
Thank you.
And I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.